We're good.
At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we start this meeting, first off, welcome everyone here this evening. As we start this evening, we're going to start with a special presentation. This will be a presentation that was made by the Minnesota Department of Transportation. We're representing it here, and it's the Concrete Paving Association 2023 Concrete Paving Award for the Third and Lion Street project. So I'm going to come around and present this to our engineering staff, represented by Jason Anderson, our Director of Public Works, as well as our general contractor on this project, which is RNG Construction, who will be represented by Greg Mathiowetz, and then there's a couple of other plaques, too. So as I'm coming around, Sharon, maybe you want to explain a little bit about this award and why it's a big deal?
Yeah, I think it's a credit to our local contractors and, of course, our staff we know and including the council, lots of discussions with our community, including the Downtown Business Association and the Chamber. And we made changes, obviously, to Third Street and Lion Street. And so anytime you make changes, there's maybe a question on how real a project this really is. So to be recognized by a statewide organization is meaningful, and I know that both Jason and the mayor and the rest of council also appreciates the fact that, in addition to recognizing the valuable work, we were able to support the local economy with our local contractors and not only RNG but Hess Concrete and then the supplier, which was Buffalo Ridge Concrete. So, yeah, just very grateful for all of us.
So with that, the, and thanks for filling in the time.
Yes.
So the, I'll present this to Jason Anderson and Greg Mathiowetz for RNG Construction, and I'll read what the plaque says. It says, "The Department of Transportation and Concrete Paving Association, the Merit Award, Outstanding Performance." This award is made to City of Marshall, RNG Construction, Buffalo Ridge Concrete and Hess Concrete Incorporated in recognition of the high-quality concrete pavement construction performed on North Third Street from Main Street to Redwood Street and West Lion Street from Trunk Highway 19 to Fifth Street in the city of Marshall, which has been rated the best project of this type, completed in Minnesota during '23, and is signed by Nancy Davenberger, who is the Commissioner of Minnesota Department of Transportation. So thank you, congratulations. So, thank you. Greg, did you have a speech you wanted to give? No, no, I'm kidding. Go ahead. So I'm going to give these to you guys, too. So with that, the, we, is there anything to be added to the agenda this evening? We'll move then to Agenda I of number two, consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on March 12th. The council does have those minutes. Are there any corrections to note?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We will move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. The, we'll move then to public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing would be on the vacation of a utility easement in the Minnesota Corn Processors Industrial Park One addition. So we have a public hearing on the resolution that would grant the petition to vacate, and then we'll consider the resolution granting the petition. So I will call on Jason Anderson, Director of Public Works, city engineer, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. You should have a drawing included in the packet that outlines the area being proposed to be vacated. The driver of this request is the Soligent Development just south of ADM, south of County Road 33 Erie Road, and just west of North Seventh Street. There's a 200-foot platted utility easement on the north side of the property that's going to be developed. Of note for the city, there are sewer, sanitary sewer force mains that are located in that easement area that pump wastewater to the wastewater treatment facility. Vacation of the southern 50 feet does not impact the city of Marshall's ability to maintain and operate our utilities, and we did reach out to all the other utility companies to seek comment as well, and I do not believe we received any at all. So staff is comfortable with the proposed vacation. It'll help give Soligent a little more room for their development, and it'll still allow space for us to maintain our facilities.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Is there anyone in the audience that's here to speak as part of this public hearing? Any comments from the city council as part of the public hearing? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So I'll move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda to close the public hearing. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. Steve, did you?
Mine doesn't even work. It's so slow.
You voted yes, though, right, to close the?
Yeah, I voted yes to.
Okay, so that motion does pass unanimously. We'll now consider the resolution that would grant the petition to vacate. Any questions on that resolution? If not, is there a motion on?
I'll make a motion to grant the resolution to vacate the public.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jim, seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. So Stephen, we have a technology issue here, so we'll take a pause here while we get this. So now we'll close the voting, and that motion does pass. Okay, then we'll move to Agenda I of number four. Agenda I of number four is to, is also a public hearing. This will be a public hearing on granting the final approval of the issuance of the conduit revenue bonds for the benefit of the Foundation for Innovation in Education and Southwest West Central Service Cooperative. This was introduced at the last regular council meeting. This will be the public hearing on this. Following the conclusion of the public hearing, then we'll consider the resolution providing the approval. So we'll start with, and I'll ask Director of Administrative Services E.J. Moberg to conduct this public hearing, and then he will also introduce another presenter or two. E.J.?
Thank you. Just wanted to point out that with, as with all conduit revenue bonds, the city will have no obligation, even if the project would have issues later. The foundation has completed the city's application for tax-exempt financing and returned the completed form with a non-refundable application fee. After the public hearing, the council will consider a resolution, which you'll notice is an eight-page resolution within the packet, not to be confused with the 52-page bond agreement or the 92-page indenture agreement that are in there as well, that you'll also be given the authority to approve. So apologize for all the pages, but that's what we needed. Joining us tonight here in person is Cliff Carmody, the Executive Director of the Southwest West Central Service Cooperative, and then also online for public hearing purposes or for council questions later as well, we have Michaela Hewitt, a Director of Baker-Tilly Municipal Advisors on our behalf. So I'll turn to Cliff.
Thank you, Mayor and the council. Not much of a presentation. Mostly want to say thank you to the council, to staff. Sharon and E.J. have been very helpful in this process. We've been at this work since about 2016, so it's taken a long time, but it's come to fruition. The project, as you well know, is to build an administrative office for our regional service agency, and we're excited to do that. I should also mention Lauren Deitz, Marshall LDA, was very instrumental making this happen. So I'll stand for any questions if there are any. Otherwise, thank you.
Any questions for Cliff? Another question, I would, I would just offer a couple of comments. One is, you know, we certainly appreciate the services that West Central, Southwest West Central Service Co-op provides to all the school districts in the region, and we also appreciate that the decision has been made to build a new administrative offices here in Marshall, because we also value the jobs that are based here. So thank you, Cliff, for your leadership and all the work that's gone into this.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on, as part of this public hearing? Any member of the council? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting.
I don't know what happened.
Oh, no.
It skipped to the next voting thing.
How did you vote?
Yes.
So that motion does pass unanimously. We'll now consider the resolution that would provide the approval, which was discussed at the public hearing. Any questions about the resolution?
I move the resolution. Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. You okay?
Yeah, it's on the different, it's on the bonds. I have it on the bonds.
It's cool with the voice vote on this one because of technical.
Oh, I agree, okay.
Oh, there we are. The motion does pass.
I guess it's the council members from work, too.
It's a worm. It's a virus in there. Just because of that, you're next.
Should have done this earlier, but this might be an appropriate time I'll introduce. We have guest observers from a class from the instructor at SMSU at B.C., France, and so you're here observing this. So it's a little unusual that we have some technical issues, but. Observe it.
Get out of your report.
Welcome, and good luck on your class. We'll move then to the consent agenda. I will bring the items up on the screen that are on the.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
Two things. One is, is that what they can see is that even without technology, the government will continue to function. Two is on our agenda, it does have a word of bids prior to the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So the, I was getting ahead of myself, but thank you, Craig, for.
I know what it's like in that chair. It can be a little stressful sometimes.
So we are on Agenda I of number five. Agenda I of number five is the Highway 23 Lift Station Improvement Projects Phase Four, the wet well renovation. We'll consider the order of bids, and I will call on Scott Truittson from our wastewater department, who will present the bids and the recommendation. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'd like to talk about the Highway 23 Lift Station. On February 13th, the council authorized us to advertise for bids for Phase Four of the project, which includes the following: removal of the four existing submersible pumps, wet well piping and guide rails, renovation of the wet well structure with concrete repairs as needed, and a new coating system installed, installation of four new pumps supplied by the city, installation of new piping in the wet well structure, and then bypass pumping of the station while all this is taking place. Two bids were received on March 13th, as shown in the attached bid tabulation, and are as follows: one bid from KHC Construction Marshall, Minnesota, in an amount of $670,000, and a second bid was received from Rubin Construction LLC of Tyler, Minnesota, in an amount of $297,200. You can see we do have a bid evaluation from Bolton and Mink, if you'd like to look at that. Basically, he's saying that, looking at what was in the bids, he thinks that they're valid bids. The contract does have a substantial completion date of October 31st, 2024, and contract completion by November 30th of 2024. Fiscal impact, Phase Four was $22,200 over the engineering estimate, but that kind of counters with the Phase Three, which is buying two more pumps. That came in $53,000 under the estimate, so we do have the money in the CIP for this. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Scott. Questions?
The only question, I do have a question. When you have bids that are $373,000 apart, and you said Bolton and Mink looked at it, also you as staff looked at this to make sure that, and I'm fine with going to the low bidder, but we're fine that he has everything in there, that there's not going to be surprises or, because that's a significant difference in bids.
Yes, that's, and that's kind of what John was getting at in his letter from Bolton and Mink, that in his evaluation, how did he put that?
But if I could jump in, too.
Absolutely.
Councilman, you know, I, we have had staff and Bolton and Mink both conversations with Rubin Construction, and I believe, Scott, we do have full confidence.
Yes, we do.
They're a competent contractor, able to deliver on this project, and we don't foresee any issues.
And the owner, Dave Rubin, was out last year and looked at the project, so he has a good idea of what it is, so.
Very good. Any other questions for Scott?
Well, and I'm comfortable with this because it comes in reasonably within the, what the estimate was. My concern is, is what happened to the other bid? I mean, did we send them two sets of plans? Did they think we were doing this twice, or? You know, I mean, it's, it's a little concerning that we see something come in with that much disparity.
When you're over 100%, yes, because that second bid is over 100% higher than the first bid. That's somebody somewhere.
Somebody, somebody moved a mark somewhere. I mean, I feel bad. Did we consult with the other bidder just to kind of say, what, what are we missing here?
I'm not sure if John reached out to him or not. I know he talked with him before the bidding process.
Sure.
I can say, though, that from our discussions with Bolton and Mink and staff, our belief of what the project should cost, the low bid is right in that neighborhood.
Yeah, it looks, it looks expected to me, and that's why, and I mean, not that, I mean, every, you can ask whatever you want at any time for something if you're trying to sell it or sell your, your skills and that, and the other bidder isn't somebody that we don't have history with either. I mean, we just completed a large project with that firm, so.
When we break the project down into its components, we feel like it should add up to around where we're at, so we're very comfortable where we're at.
Yeah, and I am, too. I just, I, you know, I just wanted to throw that out because it's also local. I mean, both of these are local contractors, and it just, I have a little bit of shell shock when I see that. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing something significant here.
Sure. Well, the, the good news is we have a, a good bid from a qualified contractor, so. Other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move we accept the, and award the bid to, as presented, to the low bidder.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and that motion does pass. So Agenda I of number six, consider authorization to purchase a dragline hose cart for the wastewater department, and once again, we'll turn to Scott Truittson from our wastewater department to present the second. Scott?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. We have, at the wastewater facility, we produce about 4 million gallons of bio solids annually. To dispose of it, we, the bio solids, we utilize a dragline system to apply to nearby agricultural fields. We have purchased a large pump, an injector tool bar that we attach to a tractor that we lease every year, and then we have hundreds of feet of hose and a large cart to roll all the hose up on for transportation and storage. If you look at that diagram, you can see in the blue, those are our current sites that we can reach with our setup currently. We can pump longer distances, but we don't have the hose or cart to do that with, so that's basically what we're asking for tonight. We do have, in the red up there, there's 128 acres that are already approved. The landowner is anxious to receive the bio solids. There's another 80 acres there that isn't approved, but that's a possibility to work on in the future, so it would basically open a lot more land for us to do land application, which works good with crop rotation, things like that. Sometimes we can't always apply in the same fields. We did get three different quotes. We did run this by the Equipment Review Committee. Quotes range from $91,901 down to $81,200, and then there's also an option to purchase a one-off new hose cart that has sat outside a little bit and the paint is faded, and that's at $74,525. All these options include the needed hoses and couplers, so we budgeted $87,500 in our CIP, and we would recommend the low bid of the $74,525.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Real quick question, if we can put that map back up before I turn to the Equipment Review Committee. So crossing the township road, is there a culvert, or how do you go across?
That would be something we'd have to address. We could either, that would be our, probably our preferred way would be to install a culvert, something that we could seal on either side when we're not using it. They also do make temporary drive-over units, but that would be harder to do. That's something we have to discuss internally, but it can be done.
Okay. Equipment Review Committee has reviewed this. Comments from that committee?
Well, our comment was, we're, all four of us, you know, the painted cart or the one that's not painted, they still have it, then?
Yeah, we just asked today.
And what we talked about is how much these draglines have saved the city of Marshall since we implemented this six years ago, about six years ago. We used to truck all this, and it's, we may spend more money on equipment, but what we've spent on trucking and trucks on the road and warrant here on the road, this works great. I don't think you guys ran into a fall yet where you haven't got all your bio.
No, we haven't.
During the past, you used to run into that with the trucking, didn't you?
We did, yeah.
And there's the labor savings, too.
Absolutely.
About half the time or less.
Yes.
With less staff, and we're not burning all the fuel in the, in the truck to, trucks to haul it. The only question that I have or concern that I have is, I don't, first, I don't like the over the road. Prefer if we can work it out to go underneath. I don't know if there's somebody on, I don't believe there's any producer that heavy hauls on that east-west township road that would be pulling, like, big loads over it, but if you put a conduit under the road, I like the thought of a dedicated conduit that can be capped or plugged so that we don't have bolts and things sticking out such that you have a smooth bore that you're pushing that are putting that hose through.
We need about a 16-inch conduit or culvert for that. Roger is actually talking with the township. He's talked to both landowners, so.
Sure.
That's something we still have to discuss, and then, of course, discuss with Jason on that, too.
Yeah, but I would strongly recommend spending a little more money and getting a smooth bore, good piece of pipe that isn't corrugated bolted, because when, with my previous job, I can't tell you how many times I got woke up at 2:00 in the morning because the hose rolled over when they charged it and cut it, and they didn't see it right away, and now we're out there mopping this stuff up because it went where it didn't belong.
Sure.
So we don't need that. Spend a little more, save a lot later.
So those are details you'll work out. Maybe there's an existing drainage culvert, too. I don't know.
Yeah, no, there isn't. We've looked already, but.
Okay. Any other questions for Scott? Thank you to Scott and your staff. Thank you Equipment Review Committee for your time you spent on this. I would entertain a motion.
I will make, I make a motion to approve purchase for $74,525.42.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Move then to Agenda I of number seven, consider the authorization to purchase a stump grinder for the street department. We'll, I'll call on Jason Anderson, city engineer, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Included in the council, you've got a couple quotes for different, two different Vermeer grinder units. One is a larger unit, one's a smaller unit. The street department did test out both of these units. While the larger unit is more powerful, they, they were still satisfied with the smaller 48 horsepower unit as well. Currently, today, we're borrowing Marshall Municipal Utilities stump grinder, and we find ourselves borrowing it a lot, so with our, the amount of use we have and with the ash pour coming, we just, we're looking to make a move to our own unit. So we did bring this to Equipment Review Committee on March 11th and, and did discuss all these things. We do have $58,000 in the CIP for this purchase. The smaller unit is $63,752.27, would be purchased through RDO at the Sourcewell contract price. If there's any questions about the machine, Dean Kudrin, our Public Way Superintendent, is here, and I could also turn it over to Equipment Review and council for questions.
Okay. Comments from Equipment Review?
When this went through Equipment Review, because we talked several options here, and we even talked about how if we contract this out, but I think, Dean, you guys said, even if you grind 50 trees a year, that's $600 a tree. Was that my number? That's 30, it was very expensive. My, that'd be $30,000 if I'm doing my numbers right.
I think it might have been uncertain on the cost, but at least a couple hundred.
$500 to $600 to grind a stump is not out of the question. So we came to the determination, it was very cost-effective. I know Craig and I had talked about this beforehand, but I didn't realize how many stumps you guys are grinding. It's not even that huge of a number for this to become cost-effective.
Yeah.
So you put that at $500 a stump, there's $11,000 just next year.
So Dean, I'll have you come, come forward. So Dean Kudrin, from our street department superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The one thing, like I said, there's 22 trees we have right now with the ash pour. It's just going to continue. We have more to take down. The downfall with using somebody's equipment, it's an older piece of equipment. If it goes down, who's liable to fix it? We're going to be. So that's one of the main reasons, and this unit is a little track unit. I didn't bring any pictures, but it's a little track unit. You can drive over the curb, get on the curb and go right on down each. We have rows of trees to do. You can go down Lynn Street and Fifth and Marsh, or, yeah, Sixth. Lot of trees being taken down, so that's the one thing I did want to emphasize, that borrowing something, it does cost you in the end.
And I believe these are from MMUs, about 50 years old already, correct?
Right, that machine, we figure it's in the late 70s. It's an old V4 Wisconsin, so.
So in terms of volume of trees? So in terms of volume of trees, and Sharon, you may remember this better than I do from our presentation at the various state of the city addresses, but there's 7,700 trees on public right of ways roughly. And of that number, just under 40%, between 30 and 40% are Emerald Ashbore. So there is a substantial number of trees, and this is just on public right of ways. I mean, in the boulevards to our, our streets, and this is not inclusive of our parks. So, so, in other words, there's a lot, a lot of ash trees are going to come down.
And I believe we discussed at Equipment Review too, one of the grants we have reimbursed us for our own staff time. Sharon, second.
Correct. Yes, the relief grant. And we did plan for some revenue paid back to the city through the street department's work, and which we did not budget. So there is some unanticipated revenue for 2024 that'll come through that grant through the work that the street department is doing.
So Equipment Review's recommendation was to purchase it after all that discussion.
Okay. Questions the council has? And the recommendation is for the option with the lower power than?
Which I appreciate.
And what's the, what's the delivery time on that? Immediately?
No, it's not. It's, I think it's, last time I talked to him was like three months out.
It is, okay. And that still fits fine with your, with your work plan.
Yeah, we'll still use the other one and keep our fingers crossed.
And the stump will still be there.
Yep, yeah. But like to get them out and dirted and seeded as soon as you can, you know, so.
Correct me, and the mayor maybe know this too, but taking down trees, we're kind of past that point right now where they're recommending for ashbore as well? Is that true?
I think we have through in partial, into April.
Okay, because, yeah, there's a time limit where they don't want you to take them down, and I think we're either at the end or near it. So the delay maybe, at least for ashbore, isn't going to be too critical.
Right, unless there's a safety issue, you know? If they're overhanging sidewalks, somewhere you have branches, so.
Yeah, I actually think we're at that point. I think there's active insect activity now, so.
So.
Very good. So you have the recommendation. I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion for the purchase of the SC48 TX stump grinder.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. So we have two more items to consider and award of bids. The next one, actually three, that we'll consider. Agenda I number eight, consider authorization to submit the MINDOT grant request letter and purchase a skid loader for the airport. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Back on January 29th of this year, we received a notice from MINDOT Aeronautics of their desire to offer a 70-30 grant to the city for purchase of a replacement skid loader to replace our 2004 Bobcat unit. We needed to act fast. They want us to get back to them by the end of this month. So we did, following a meeting with the Equipment Review Committee and some discussion, we did reach out for some quotes across our community in the region. And on March 21st, we opened and received six quotes from five different implement dealers. The quote tabulation is included in the packet. The low proposal that meets all of the requested specifications is a 2024 Bobcat S76 from Sterling Equipment and Repair of Cottonwood for $38,724.03 after trade-in of our existing '04 Bobcat S250. So after we include the grant split of 70-30, the resulting local purchase price is $11,617.21. Staff would recommend that council authorize us to submit a grant request letter to MINDOT and to move forward with the purchase of this unit. Once again, Dean Kudrin's here to help address questions regarding the equipment.
Okay, questions?
Well, I'll just comment, Equipment Review, we had some discussion about this. Dean currently has a Bobcat and the equipment out at the airport only, Bobcat has unique pin system to it. So even though the body came in cheaper, I don't think the bid overall is cheaper because we have to convert our equipment and, you know, Bobcat, why Bobcat does it, they just want to be unique. It is what it is. So I don't want to go start replacing his other equipment either, and we've had good luck with your current Bobcat. And we will, then our pin systems are of our attachments out there, I should say, we'll hook right up to this machine without any extra labor or work. So I, the Equipment Review does agree with the Sterling Equipment bid for the Bobcat, even though it is not necessarily a low bid.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any other input or questions? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion to purchase the Bobcat from Sterling Equipment and Repair in Cottonwood.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Locked up again? Route row. I think it's all gone this time.
I didn't mind just hold it up for a second.
He's playing games with us now.
Yeah, I'm good now, I'm good now.
Done.
We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Okay, so then we'll move then to Agenda I number nine, chip sealing on various city streets. We'll consider the resolution that would accept the bid and award the contract. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. You have the, the resolution with the bid tabulation included in the, in your packet. On March 21st, we opened bids for our annual chip sealing project. The low proposal is from Pearson Brothers, Inc. of Hanover, Minnesota, in the amount of $132,504.60. This is quite a bit below our engineer's estimate of a little over $161,000 for this work. Included in the council packet, in the memo, there's a table listing all the streets that were considered. There's, below the primary table, there's some alternate streets listed. City staff would propose, due to the advantageous pricing, to include those alternate streets as well as Commencement Boulevard, as long as we can keep it under the $165,000 budget. So that's what we would propose to do with this project. If there's any questions, I can address them. But staff would propose to award it to Pearson Brothers for an amount not to exceed the $165,000 budget for this project.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Questions?
I just have a comment. And I know that every year when we work with the chip sealing bid, there's, there's not agreement on the council as far as the, the benefit of chip sealing. We've kind of batted this back and forth and, and I personally just want to say that I know that there's, there's pros and cons, and you can point to some places where you don't think it helps. And then I think there's other places where we do see it make a difference. But traveling around other communities and other areas of the country, looking at it and looking how prevalent it is and the conditions on the streets and the other benefits that it, that does have with not just the wear and with kind of protecting the, the actual original bituminous, I still believe that it is a worthy investment for the, for the community. So I know that this isn't a total agreement, but I do go in supporting the, the chip sealing projects.
Well, and you have adapted your, your practice based on kind of the, the best information from the MINDOT engineers and what their practice are. And so your practice is really to do it the year after the overlays are done, correct?
Yeah, that is correct, Mayor. We're over, we're chip sealing our new pavements as soon as we can. So new, new constructed pavements, new overlays. Obviously, we can't do everything, so we try to prioritize which ones should receive the treatment and which ones shouldn't. But we do our best to apply it early and often to get the maximum benefit. That's the latest information from MINDOT.
And one of the benefits really is for the, the solar degradation of the, the black asphalt, so.
Can I make a one additional comment? I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
That's fine, you can go first.
Oh. I'll just vouch for engineering too, because sometimes I think I'm an engineer and I'm not, definitely, but, and kind of question this too, but I know that you have evaluated on an annual basis. The one modification that you may not notice or see is, you know, you looked at parking lots specifically, and I don't believe, at least this year, and you'll keep evaluating, whether you're not going to look at seal coating parking lots based on some analysis that you did. So that may change, but I do think the engineering staff has, has, does look at this and they have made some modifications along the way.
Jim?
And I'm one who, I've never been a fan of this, and, and my take always is that we do street projects, and Bob, you kind of hit the nail on the head with the solar. The sun hurts our streets. Keep our trees in. If we keep our trees and protect our streets, and I'll use the street, Whitney Street, which is by my house, has never been seal coated and has held together pretty good. East Marshall Street, which is a wider street, doesn't have the boulevard, has seal coated and has come apart worse than Whitney, but it also gets hit by more sun. And that's where I really encourage, let's keep our trees in when we do these projects, because you keep the sun off your pavement, your pavement will last a lot longer. So, but I've never, I, I will not support this. I just, and I do respect the engineering department. Jason, I have talked for hours over this, very, very closely, so, but, that's my opinion.
Other input? If not, you do have the recommendation from staff.
I move that we accept the, or that we do the resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract for sip, for chip sealing 2024 not to exceed $165,000.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Move then to Agenda I number 10, the bituminous overlay on various city streets. We'll consider the resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. So our annual mill and overlay project, where it also includes sidewalk ramp ADA improvements along the overlaid routes. In a similar vein to the Seal Coat project we just discussed, we had an estimate on this of 605, a little over $605,000 for the streets that you see in your council packet on the table and in the drawing. On March 21st, we received bids for the project, and we had two bids. Central Specialties of Alexandria was the low proposal of $587,422.58. So again, under our estimate. We did include an alternate street of Mall Street, you'll notice in the packet. So similarly to the Seal Coat project, we would recommend to award the contract in the amount of $587,422.58 to Central Specialties, understanding that we would intend to include the alternate street and not exceed our budgeted amount of $650,000. In the fiscal impact area of the memo, we do identify that we expect a little over $610,000 to be the amount that we would expend if we include Mall Street.
Jason, there is a discrepancy between the map and the description, so the, the assumption is that the bid was based on the, on the map and that it has to do with Boyer. It says Boyer to Helber from Highway 23, and the map is, and I think the intent is from Highway 59.
Yes, that's correct. Apologize for that.
And that's what they bid on, right?
That is correct.
Otherwise, that would be a long ways.
Yeah, they, they bid that properly. They bid it by the quantity, and the, the quantity reflects the, the proper area.
Okay. And, and just a word about that location, that will correct the, the roughness and the water standing right at that Aldi entrance. Questions for Jason? If not, you have the, the low responsible, responsible bid as recommended by staff. I would entertain a motion.
I move the resolution accepting the bid and awarding the contract for Mill and Overlay.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just in the interest of looking down to the future and putting that alternate in, I understand that's something that we should do at some point in time, but looking at the budget and tightness of the budget going forward, where we don't know where everything's going to come, is this something we really should do? Or should we save that extra dollars for unintended things that raise a higher level of need? You know, I'm okay with going with the ones that we've got planned and are in the CIP, but the alternate ones, you know, that's just, so just wanted to bring that up for consideration and discussion.
Okay. Question?
Yeah, I could try to address that, and I'd probably bring EJ Moberg into the discussion as well. But it's my understanding that our Mill and Overlay funds come from sort of a dedicated source at this point in time. EJ could probably better identify that. But we levy a certain amount into it, and then we've been spending down that account, our transportation fund, that has some other dollars in it. So I don't believe that there's a direct levy impact to the additional work. I don't know if I did that any justice, EJ. I'll turn it over to you.
What you say is correct in that we do have a levy that goes towards this. We're currently fine as we spend it down. We are looking at trying to figure out how to fund this going forward, long-term. We do have some state dollars that are going to amount to about $7,000 going to this account this year, that we're, we're dedicating towards this fund as well. $54,000 next year. But those are new monies that, that haven't been used before. Otherwise, it's mainly been used by levy and then just a spend down of some of the other monies we've had in that, in that account.
And just a question or point for clarification. So by adding the alternate, the alternate is in the CIP, it's just a project down and we're just pulling it up because there's room? And basically, if we're, if we're looking at doing those certain projects, if price goes up, we're, we're already a touch ahead of the game in the following year, correct?
That's correct. You know, if we were to overlay every road that we wanted to, we would have a bigger project every year than we actually do. We operate under the premise that costs go up in construction, so if we can, we like to, we, we know it's important for the council to be on budget, so we make sure that we put an estimate together that we think can be delivered by the low bid on or under budget, and we have the alternates to give us the ability to work up to that number to maximize our work in a given year and not just keep kicking the can and deferring our, our maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Good question, good discussion. Thank you.
Can I have a quick question, Jason? As these bids come in, are they favorable for, because it seems like last year, a couple years ago, we were having to cut streets out.
Right.
Are these bids with the overlays coming in much more favorable this year than the past couple of years?
You know, actually, I think the unit prices are a little higher. Last year was kind of a complicated Mill and Overlay project. We had numerous funding sources and some wastewater funds, and it was, it was complicated. I, I don't remember the specifics on how we ended up off budget on that one. It might have been something in our estimating process, but no, numbers are slightly higher than the year prior. It's just sometimes, sometimes how it works out, we don't hit every estimate, I guess.
When you say it's like 2%, 3%, we're not like a 20, 15, 20% jump. You're more of a 2%, 3%?
I would say, I didn't do the math specifically, probably 5% to 6%.
5% to 6%.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sharon?
Yeah, I don't want to thwart the recommendation by the engineering staff. I do agree that there's fund balance to work with. But just to kind of clarify a little bit further with EJ, I know him and I have had some discussions about this particular fund and future spending, and, and I do think it is a deeper discussion as we enter the 25 budget season here shortly and then going forward. So in simple terms, I think Dr. Meister, Jason, EJ, they're all right, and it's, it's a consideration either direction.
Any other input? With that, and it's good to know that everyone's right here, so.
I'm sorry to make it difficult. I mean, I'm sorry to make it difficult, but, yeah. I mean, if you want to play conservative, you know, maybe you should not do the alternates, but.
I'd make a recommendation, we just do the straight and not do the alternate for right now, given that, and figure out things as we get into the budget year. And if there's time, then we've got that money, we can dedicate it.
Are you making that motion?
I would make that motion.
Is there a second to Steve's motion?
I would second that motion.
Seconded by Jim. If not, we'll move to a vote. And that motion does pass. And that motion does pass. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda item. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening, and they include introduction of the ordinance amendments to Chapter 22, Article 4, mobile food units and carts, consider the request of performance food service for a street closure of West Fairview Street on Saturday, May 4, 2024, consider the request for a street closure of North Third Street for Juneteenth, which is Wednesday, June 19, 2024, and then consider the approval of the bills, the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for separate discussion?
Move to approve as written.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Amanda, discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Jim, it didn't pick up you.
Jim, are you a zombie?
I voted yes.
The motion passes unanimously, so.
So yes, Dr. Meister, you were right again.
Duly noted.
Worms coming your way.
Agenda, I've never 15, then. Consider the request for a variance adjustment permit for a reduced front yard, set back the location of 608 Adobe Road. With us tonight is Ilya Gutman, who will present this item. This also was considered by the planning commission. Ilya.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So this is a request for variance to build a garage addition to the house, the circle. If it is built the way the owner wants, it will project into the required front yard. The required front yards are 25 feet throughout the city, and so it includes the circles. The variances are permitted by the statutes and by ordinance if three conditions are met. Request is reasonable, it doesn't affect the area, and parcel is unique and without consideration of the owner's actions. So in this case, Steph thinks that request is reasonable, the projection will not affect the area. However, the parcel is not really unique because there are plenty of other corner lots similar to this one. So the recommendation was to deny it, and it's supported by the city attorney. Now, I have to mention that in light of this request, Steph looked at the general ordinance requirements, and thinks that it's possible to change the requirements for the front yard, the circles, and reduce it to 15 feet instead of 25. So it went through the LNO committee today, and the reaction was favorable, so we think that we will proceed with it, we will go to the planning commission for public hearing in April, and then to the council.
Okay, thank you, Ilya. We'll open up for questions and input. First off, anything from the planning commission, then we'll go to LNO.
Planning Commission, you know, they were worried about setting a precedent by, you know, approving this variance, and I think we're, we're worried about it not being a unique situation. I do think it's a pretty unique situation, I don't think it's common in Marshall, in this lot, in this area, but I do appreciate the fact that we're looking at changing the ordinance for this sort of situation where the cul-de-sac curves in like that, and having a smaller setback, so that's good.
Okay. Legislative Ordinance Committee had discussion on this?
We did have a discussion this today. We tried to stay on task because our discussion worshiped on what the ordinance is being proposed. And our proposal, recommendation, which we go to planning zone, is to change to 15 feet, which would help this homeowner out, and if, I don't know, it takes about two months for ordinances to work through, where he would probably not be required to have a variance, but, you know, at this time, our ordinance is to require him to have one. I know Pam Whitmore was a good part of that discussion, I don't know if she's with us tonight.
Yeah, City Attorney Whitmore, are you available?
Pam, do you want to kind of fill us in with what, you filled us in on the rules and regulations of this at our LNO meeting?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, and what about scene?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So the variances are a tricky thing under the, our state law, and what Ilya had mentioned is accurate, the courts require that the variance only be allowed if it's reasonable, which the planning commission found that it was, that it fits the character, which the planning commission found that it did, but that it also does not present, because of the uniqueness of the actual piece of property, that it is so unique that it doesn't create practical difficulties. And there's actually a case on point with respect to this type of situation involved variance for an expansion of a home. And what the court said in that case is that the practical difficulty test is not met when an owner is just doing what he or she wants to do, and it can't, that practical can't, difficulty can't be created by the zoning code itself, that's not considered a unique characteristic of the property. So with that, with that case having been decided, and still a good law in Minnesota, I provided that to Ilya and Jason to be able to educate the planning commission. So, you know, really, the discussion of this piece of property is what, what characteristics of the property itself is unique that is creating a practical difficulty, as opposed to just because of how our zoning code is set up.
Okay.
And I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Pam. We'll open up for any input, questions from any member of the council.
You know, after LNO meeting, I looked at this some more, and this garage could be built to fit into, or addition onto this garage could be built to fit in with our current ordinances. Obviously, the garage should not be at the same angle as the house, but he has a property there to build it that way. If you see the house right next door has the kink into it, you just have to put a kink into it, so it could fit onto this lot with, with an angle, just, it takes a draw-in and it may cost more, but when you purchase a property like this, you have to be aware of those ordinances, those rules, those setbacks, if you want to add on to it, because the neighbor, obviously, right next door did his, fitted on to his lot. So, and I'm glad we're looking at the ordinance, but I have a tendency at this point to deny this variance due to the fact of the neighbor made it work on his lot.
Other input? Thank you, Jim.
And honestly, that garage, that existing garage is an add-on later already, isn't it? I mean, that, is that original to the house when the house was built?
I don't know that.
Craig, I would say it's added on to the house, no, it wasn't, I believe it's original to the house, the way the driveway is laid out, and the way the cars are going. I believe, I remember this house went up, and yes, that was part of the home.
Okay.
They just designed it very nicely, so the garages did not face the front of the house, which is a nice, nice design, whoever designed this house.
Any other questions? And Amanda or Ilya, once again, the recommendation from the planning commission is what?
To deny your request.
What is the wishes of the council? You have the staff input, you have the discussion from the other committees, as well as, as the planning commission input.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Ilya, you did inform the property owner of an ordinance revision, correct?
Correct.
And he does understand of the potential.
I would make the recommendation that we deny the variance, it doesn't fit into our ordinances.
Motion by Jim, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by C., discussion.
Well, I think if this homeowner has patience, he's going to be able to build his garage as we look at our ordinances. I love the fact that our city staff just came up, and they're looking at ordinances to relax them, to allow this stuff to go. It's just sometimes government works not quite as fast as the public likes us to work.
And I, and I agree with that, Jim, and I think that that's important, and thank you, Ilya, and thanks to staff for, for doing that, because I do believe that when we review ordinances and we look at how we operate in the city, it's important to remember that these are, we're a gathering of private property, and I really believe that the rights to use that property without impinging on others is sacred to ownership, otherwise, why are we owning it? And so I appreciate the fact that we are trying to accommodate without causing other hardships to allow people to have a good use of their property. And we have a lot of these properties in town, depending on where you bought and when the properties were developed, that do have tight spaces and traveling around. I mean, Jim, you build houses now, and one of the biggest expenses when you go to other areas and they talk about how much houses cost, it's because of the property, the land, not the value of the building. And so these lots, both my two boys bought new homes, and they're in postage stamp lots. And it's, and the, and the houses cost a lot of money, and so when we look at these types of settings, I appreciate the fact that we are trying to work with property owners to get benefit and value out of their property, and that we do it without causing harm to others, so that's my dime, but thank you for that work, and thank you to the planning commission too, for always looking at those and considering that.
And Craig, I would say you were so right, because I build in other communities, and we're working with a community south of here now, that is absolutely impossible to work with. We're literally fighting over 12 inches.
Yeah.
Similar situation, and our staff is so good, I mean, for the staff to come up with a, an ordinance revision to make this work, it's like, I applaud them, say, we're trying to let you use your property, let's make this work, so.
Well, and Jim, and I think it's even bigger than to make it work for this, it looks like it's practical for everybody's property, and I appreciate that, it's for the good of the whole, and thank you for that.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion, the motion is to deny. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you, Ilya. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is the agenda item number 16, the Ucap Bus Shelter Project, we have a memorandum of understanding between Community Transit of United Community Action Partnership and City of Marshall. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Included in the packet, you've got an MOU between Community Transit of Ucap and the city. This, Ucap has a grant, a $207,000 total cost grant project, and they've asked the city to help them design and administer the contract. So we did bring this to council back in 2022, but there's been a lot of back and forth for Ucap and with them and MinDOT regarding the grant, so the project hasn't taken off yet, but we have worked with their director, Nikuleski, to update the MOU, make it more current for the existing project, and that's what we're looking at here. This is a similar arrangement to what we did in 2020 with the bus shelter project, where we put them in on Fourth and Redwood and Stephen and Bird Street. This is six different locations, the shelters and sidewalk and concrete pad improvements will all be generally in the right of way. There's a map in the packet that shows all the locations there, but staff is obviously in agreement with this memo. The memo outlines responsibilities, Ucap is in charge of maintaining the facilities, city staff will help administer the contract, and Ucap will pay the city for engineering services, as would be typical for our projects. If there's any questions, I can help address them, but our intent would be to help Ucap advertise this project for quotes or bids very soon, we're still waiting on that final word from them.
Okay, thank you, Jason, questions?
I move approval of the MOU between Community Transit of United Community Action and the City of Marshall.
I'll second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda, discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. It's great to see these projects getting completed. We'll close the voting. Motion passes, we'll note one abstention. Agenda item number 17, the Independence Park parking lot, consider the authorization to advertise for bids. Jason?
Yeah, I'll introduce this project, and we do have Preston Stensrud from our Parks Department here as well. I'll try to be brief, we did discuss this project a few times with the PIT committee, and I think following those discussions, we've got a good project proposed and put together. We're proposing a concrete surface for that back parking lot of Independence Park that comes off of New Slane, curb and gutter and storm sewer drainage for that parking lot included. The engineer's estimate is, including some allowance for contingency and engineering fees, is sitting at $256,000 roughly. Talking with EJ Moberg, Director of Administrative Services, I believe we have a budget of $285,000 for this project, following some adjustments to the CIP to, to make this happen. I can answer any questions if you have them for me, or, as I mentioned, Preston's here as well, and EJ.
Okay, open up for questions.
What would be some of the Legion Field projects that would be delayed? And the reason I ask that question is because Legion Field, the park is beautiful, I love Independence Park, I've used that parking lot myself, it's muddy, but you go to the other side if you don't want to get muddy, and you go there during the day when it's dry. Legion Field, on the other hand, advertises our city as much as the park does, sometimes more with the revenue it brings in with the ball.
Yep, great question, thank you, Mayor and Council. So in this year's, we actually started last year, and I can't remember the exact amounts, but we have some placeholders for Legion Field to do all the improvements, but we know it's going to be over phases. So what, we're going to be allowed to get done this year from actual construction, I don't think it'll affect us at all, it'll just move the placeholder to finish the restroom concession building next year, because we weren't going to have enough funds to do it. Instead of having two partial projects, we'll be able to get this one done, knowing Legion was already kind of a phased project, you know, it's easier to put in the budget in the CIP in two numbers instead of one big number, because I think that concessions building was like 850,000 or something like that. So this will just, that bank kind of will just get deferred till, till next year, and we'll finish this first. So instead of just having a partial, and then you get your mobilization fees again from the contractor, just be easier to get this cleaned up, I think, so.
And we had on the PIT, we had a lot of discussion about the pros and cons of splitting, because we really looked and considered that for quite a while, we were on splitting this, this Independence Parking Lot project into two, and it, after we really looked at it, it just didn't make sense to do it, and we're changing a couple of the, to me, it's important for parking adjacent to grass, that you have some type of a delineation that's not a soft curb or just a transition directly to grass, because as soon as parking's short, all of a sudden, grass is an option, and then we don't have grass, now we've got a good parking lot and a mud walk to get where we want to go. So removing the posts that are currently there and not putting in curb or some other delineator, we're going to have parking on the grass and, and other issues, and then with drainage, so we did spend a lot of time, and there was a lot of conversations with PIT, and I, this comes to be a pretty solid recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig, thank you, Jason.
In that discussion, I fully support the paved parking lot, we had good discussion. I don't support the project as the curb and gutter. When we talk about stormwater runoff, there's a retaining pond 100 feet from this parking lot, so I'm not sure where we're directing water to, except in Culver's, to that retaining pond. And we always talk about, you know, shrinking our streets, changing our stuff, there's a lot of communities in this state and other states, they don't have curb and gutters in their, on their streets. I think Hutchinson, we have beautiful homes, and I have owned one of our houses in Hutchinson, they have no curb and gutter in those streets, and there's half million, million dollar homes along there. I, I don't oppose the paving, I oppose this budget with the curb and gutter, because I think it's a 60 or 70,000 dollar add-on with the storm sewer.
Might have been a little less than that, maybe 40-ish, 40, 50, yeah.
I think, as you talk about paving, it's not, it's $40,000, I think we can save. I understand, Craig, that people may park on the grass, I don't seem to see a lot of that in these neighborhoods, we have houses where there is no curb and gutter, I just, it can happen, you're correct.
But you don't, you don't have organized gatherings, I mean, when you go in there, anything that's, that's a city event, and you start getting, I use that back parking lot quite a bit, and people are parking where they're not supposed to park, you can barely get in and out of there, I guarantee you, they're going to be on the grass. Now, we spent a lot of time in the Now, we spent a lot of time in the last month in another state at youth gatherings where their parks aren't organized like this at all. And I'm telling you that we need to be proud of what we have here and I don't want to go backwards. If we didn't have those posts in that parking lot at Independence Park, they would be parking right up against that storm pond. I just, I just don't want to see that.
See, I think if the parking lot's striped, parking lots, you know, striped, handicap parking, I don't think we would. I mean, I see the other communities, I go to youth baseball up in the cities and I don't see that and they don't have necessarily have, you know, curb and gutter or post or anything. So I I do not oppose the paving of it. I, in tight, tight budgets, I oppose the curb and gutter and I think this would be a good spot that we wouldn't need curb and gutter because when you say storm sewer, the retaining pond is literally 100 feet from this parking lot.
Okay.
Maybe 150.
Other input, other questions? We do not have a motion on the table at this point.
Why do the posts need to be removed? I mean, they would be for the project, but like why, you know, that would take.
It makes, it makes the driveway, we're already shrinking it and the driveway feels small because if you're along a curb and you bump it, it's not going to damage. But if you're along a post, you're going to just, you're going to stay three or four feet away, you know? So we're, we're kind of compensating. I also feel that this is kind of a, a long-term commitment to the park improvement. So I think when you, yes, it's an upfront cost, but the 50-year plan and then you divide the curb out, it's not that big of a add-on and we won't be able to add it later if we decide. I mean, you're kind of committed now with elevations. I also like the consistency of the front parking lot has curb, just so we're kind of being consistent. I will say, as an example, out at the back, the maintenance parking lot at the arena doesn't have curb around it and people, it is a free-for-all out there where the other two parking lots are due and I've never seen anybody parked in the grass. So that's a good example. A time like now, like when the snow melts and we have events, 4th of July, it's going to be, the whole park's going to be a parking lot is what'll kind of end up happening because you can just drive wherever you want, light up the night, be another kind of example when you have a really high-attended event. And then if we end up with mud ruts and stuff, what's it going to cost us in maintenance to reseed and do that over and over again? So there's a couple different ways to look at it, I think, so.
And we did actually consider reposting, you know, putting posts back in. Was there 180?
Yeah, but they're like 75 or 80 dollars apiece, so they.
When you kind of run the math.
You're over half of the price of the curb just in wood posts, so.
Okay, other questions, other input?
Well, can I ask a question with Jim regarding the gutter with the drainage there? What is the purpose of having the, did you say like the sewage or the pipes?
Stormwater.
The stormwater.
Yep.
Just drip.
We, we talked about that, like having some curb cutouts where water could flow, but you're going to send a highly, Jason, correct me, but a highly concentrated flow through that cutout and it's probably going to cut out the turf or, you know, bring all the debris there. So you're, and then people will ride bikes through that cutout and you're kind of creating a little bit of a swamp trail to who knows what. And then you're also going to send all that water directly over our new trails. So then if it cuts that out, then we're replacing that. You're kind of just shifting things, I think, a little bit, but we did, we did talk about that a little bit.
We actually spent just about as much time talking about how to, how to get rid of putting in catch basins and pipe as we did about curb versus no curb and concrete versus asphalt. We've actually spent an awful lot of time on this and I'm really proud of the group that flushed all this out. We don't agree 100% on everything, but there's, there's been a lot of vetting of the, of the issues here.
Sharon, this is where, when you can say everyone's correct.
I will add that if you look at any corner in the city, it just seems like people want to take the shortest route possible and I support J-turns, but look at every single J-turn. Every, almost every single one has a big gully or rut right next to it because they don't want to take the paved or concrete surface. They want to take it a little bit tighter. I think you'll see that here, but it is additional costs and everyone's right.
Okay. Other discussion, other input? If not, we've had good discussion on this. I'm ready for a motion to be made.
I'd move to approve as suggested with the curb and gutter.
Motion by Steve, is there a second? Seconded by Craig. Discussion?
I think, Mr. Mayor, for discussion, I think it's just going to save. I, I appreciate Councilmember Lazinski's argument and I've already made one discussion on saving money, but again, for this, long-term, I think this is the right thing to do in saving money.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 18, considered authorization to submit a grant application for the design of intersection safety improvements at Trunk Highway 23 and Tiger Drive. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks Administrator Sharon Hansen for the excellent segue into J-turn discussions. So city staff is looking for city council support for a grant application to help with the possible construction of another reduced conflict intersection or J-turn in our city limits identified on the map shown on the screen at Tiger Drive, Stadium Drive and Trunk Highway 23. Some background on this, on January 3rd, 2024, the Marshall Area Transportation Group hosted a meeting right here in these chambers with numerous stakeholders present to discuss the safety and concerns at this intersection. There were representatives from SMSU, Marshall Public Schools, City of Marshall, some industrial partners and stakeholders, a lot of representation. And then, of course, MINDOT was present to discuss the intersection and provide some, some insight. So at that meeting, our District Eight Engineer, John Hughesby, and the District Eight Traffic Engineer, Cody Brand, gave some nice presentations and facilitated a lot of discussion about the intersection and some of the challenges associated with funding and improvement at the intersection because, as we all know, every single transportation agency is struggling with funds. So at that presentation, MINDOT largely focused on the possibility of implementing a J-turn here and that being the most low-cost, high-benefit type of solution that that could be proposed and the most likely type of project that MINDOT could see through to fruition here. So following that meeting with a lot of good conversation and, you know, I was surprised, I saw a lot of what I thought to be a lot of support for a J-turn at this intersection from the stakeholders directly adjacent to it, like the college and the, and the school system. So we did reach out to them and we do have letters of support included in the application, which you have in the council packet. We have a letter of support from SMSU, from MINDOT and from the High, Marshall Public Schools and the high school principal on that letter as well. So there's a, a new grant out there that kind of came across our, our desk very recently and kind of quietly. It was a, a rural high-risk roads grant that was in the 2023 Transportation Omnibus Bill and that's the funding that we'd like to target for this. We worked with MINDOT to come up with a, an estimated cost of $400,000 for this design work. And essentially what this would do is it would work through all of the necessary MINDOT channels to bring a project to what they call 30% plan, would be our hope. We'd have to update the intersection control evaluation, do some public engagement, work with MINDOT's St. Paul office to go through geometric stuff to really vet the project and make sure that it's right. So this would not be a construction project, it would be a grant to help go through the process of determining if this is a good construction project and possibly bringing it to a intermediate design level. So I've talked a lot about that now, so I'll turn it over to city council. Mayor Burns was obviously at the meeting on January 3rd. If you've had input on that as well. And I know Lauren Deitz is in the audience for, represent EDA and what that could mean for this development area as well.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. I would just add that, first off, MINDOT District Eight has been very supportive of, of what, what is the solution that is feasible and possible and fundable for this intersection? The, at the meeting, you know, we did view a lot of video of, you know, what is the traffic pattern right now and currently the, the, the most concern is, is in the morning and in the afternoon when school is, students are arriving at school and especially when students are leaving school about 3:15. And, and one of the things that is happening right now with that intersection is that the southbound traffic on Highway 23 is coming at road speed and there is a, you know, reduced speed limit, but it's, it's, it's intermittent and it's temporary. And so we have crossover traffic coming from the SMSU side. This is right by the wastewater pump station. We have a lot of traffic that is coming from the high school side. We have some turning traffic from the northbound trying to turn in. And especially we have, we have traffic that is coming out on, help me with the streets, but Commencement Drive that are then going up to that intersection because there's no crossover at Commencement Drive and they're using it as a, similar to a roundabout. So they're going up there, making a U-turn and what, what is happening now is that there's no separation of all of those different things that are going on and you end up with traffic that is caught in the middle or pulling out and it's, it's, there has been accidents there. We're fortunate that there hasn't been a serious injury or worse that has been there. So I think the intent and the recommendation out of that, that meeting that Marshall Area Transportation Group hosted was, you know, what is, what, what are some solutions here? And of course, we would all like a, a foolproof solution that would maybe be a full interchange or it would maybe be some other solution. And all those things can be looked at, but the, the reality is, is that as MINDOT would look at an application and go through their scoring, doing the cost to, cost ratio to what the project would deliver, the roundabout is probably what, not the roundabout, the J-turn, reduced conflict intersection is probably the one that would warrant further investigation, fair to say. Okay. So open up for any discussion.
Yeah, and I would add, too, that with the social science building being purchased or being leased by Southwest, West Central, that Maytech is going to be there, West Central's going to be the one, and we're going to be back there. So there's definitely going to be more student traffic there as well. I just have a question, Jason, about, so after this is done, who, who would pay for the cost of the construction?
Yeah, that's a good question. So I, you know, and I think that the way we've written this application, I'll start and just say that we've written it towards a J-turn, but it should be clear that I think the intersection control evaluation process will vet any other options or opportunities. But, you know, MINDOT's seen this stuff a lot. They know what kind of generally ranks and what doesn't. And we just feel like a J-turn is probably where this ends up and some of their metrics and formulas lead that way as well. So to your, to your question though about construction, this is, as I mentioned, this is just designed, this is not a programmed construction project. So what this does, though, is it positions us really well to look for funding and to lobby for a project in the future. This is like that necessary first step to go find the money in the future. And whether that's MINDOT finding programming or we find another grant, we'll have to keep working at that. But doing this project in partnership with SMSU, with MINDOT, with Marshall Public Schools, all in coordination with the City of Marshall, that's really strong and that'll, that'll help.
Thank you.
But. And this again fits towards.
I was prepared to say though, this is a, the state highway system.
Yeah.
And the state, you know, so it's not like we're doing a local street, so.
Yeah.
And then this also fits our safe, safe schools, safe routes agenda or priority that we've, we've pushed so many projects through on safe routes to schools.
Which is a potential source of funding.
I was just going to say, I agree with Steve, you know, this is, it's a state highway system, so I would foresee the burden of cost fall upon the state as a state highway system. We don't plow it, so.
Okay, other input? If not, I would entertain a motion for the authorization to submit the grant application.
I so move.
Second.
Did you second? Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Commission Board Liaison Reports. Craig?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Steve?
I'm going to defer to my esteemed colleague on the right here because she was able to attend. I was at work and stuck at work.
And Amanda?
Planning Commission covered what we talked about earlier today with the variance and then Economic Development Authority. We've talked about Soliogen as a ribbon cutting coming up here in April. There's a couple new downtown businesses, tea, tranquility, herbal tea and wellness and a nap time play cafe. Demo started in ShopCo and I don't know if permits were pulled yet. No, not yet, hopefully soon for Marshals. And the city is also looking at partnering with CMODs for professional videos and photos to market our community.
Very good. Steve?
CVB met and, let me see here, they had, oh, they are going to support Marshall Aquatic Center with a sponsorship. They haven't decided the amount yet, but they're working with Preston on that. And then they do have their lineup for Prairie Jam and I heard it's really good. So put that in your calendar. And then we were, we had our meeting over at Actions, Action Track Sports, is that what it's called? And we got to tour their facility. So really cool if you've never been there before, really neat facility and their history that they have here and what they've done for people who are not able to be mobile on their own. And they are actually working with, I believe, the state parks to put those track sports in state parks so that if elderly or somebody who can't walk around state parks can actually use it. So pretty amazing program that they're doing there. So that's all I have.
Very good. Jim? We'll move then to Councilmember Individual. I'm Mr. Jim, we'll start with you.
Oh, I just want to start, I see Dean kind of looks like me, like ready to go to sleep. I appreciate all the city staff for going out and moving snow, not just the city staff, but all the public staff, all the folks, because it takes the whole city to move a snowstorm like this. It takes people working together and, you know, I even know an example of, we, one of our skid loaders blew a radiator and one of the local companies loaned us a skid loader to use. Dean used several private companies to help move snow from out of town. Our private contractors getting the sidewalks opened up, getting our businesses up because that's a big deal. Our city is open in less than two days after a storm like that and that, to me, is amazing because I go to other cities and I, they'd still be lost, honestly. So it's a credit to all those and a credit to our city staff. It's a credit to Jason for taking the phone calls because I know that our city staff does put snow in people's driveways. That's where we got to put it when we plow the streets. So I do give, I mean, Jason, thank you for taking those calls so we as council members don't have to.
And others.
Because some of those people are not happy.
Not just me, a lot of people take those calls, so.
Right, but your staff does. A lot of those folks are not happy, but there's no other place for Dean to put the snow. I understand it's heavy and help out your neighbors if they're elderly. Go move the snow at the end of the driveway for them. You get home tonight, council, anybody here, if you see an elderly neighbor that still has snow on the driveway, move it for them because it is heavy.
Define elderly, Jim. You come over to my house?
At my plow truck, it can be arranged. All you have to do is call. I just complimented that, that I think it's, I always like it how our city comes together and, and we're open, we're open for business and that creates revenue.
Steve? Craig?
Besides being elderly?
Yeah, just, yeah, to all us elderly, if you're capable, go to the more elderly or less capable and help them too. So thank you, Jim.
Couple of issues on that. Make sure you clean out your driveways. I saw four people trudging through snow where, not the driveways, their sidewalks, where the sidewalks weren't cleaned yet and they were struggling. They were, they were going through it. It was a struggle. The other thing I hate to bring up, but constituents called me, a couple of them, about golf carts, so beware. That might be coming down the bike again.
Amanda?
I've got nothing.
Couple of things. The last week, we had the Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities Legislative Day. I attended that and as, as I think the council knows, you know, we have, the League of Minnesota Cities does lobbying on our behalf and they cover a broad range of things. The coalition has a more concise of issues that they focus on that are specific to greater Minnesota cities. And this year, there's three or four that they really focused on. One is funding for emergency services in rural Minnesota where there really are real issues with, with the financial viability of a lot of emergency services. So the governor did have in a supplemental budget, you know, some additional funding
funding for that purpose. And there's a request for additional funding this year or perhaps next year. The, in addition to that, the Coalition is working hard on the bonding bill and, you know, working through, especially for public infrastructure, water and sewer and wastewater improvements. We also, City Marshal has a public safety request in for additional work that would be done at, at our merits center. And then the, the largest issue of concern, and this really changes day by day or week by week, is concern that really started with a, a bill to promote affordable housing. But the effect of that is that it really preempts local zoning and housing standards and really takes away a lot of the, the local control and really addresses issues that are in fully developed cities, but then applies it statewide. So there's, the Coalition is doing a lot of, a lot of work on that. Two other quick issues. Earlier this month, Sharon and I delivered the State of the City address at SMSU. It was well-attended. In fact, C and John and Amanda, I think we're all, all in attendance. And then we did another one at the Senior Center or Adult Community Center. And then we did a kind of a modified version of that on the radio. So thank you, Sharon, for your work on that also. And then finally, we've had some recent, within the last week, discussions regarding our census number. The, Stephen and I had a call with, with an individual from the demographers, State Demographers Office, who gave us some insight. And we believe, based on his insight, two things. One is that our new number will be known sometime in May. And second off, that the U.S. Census Bureau will be adjusting our number. So it will, will be increased, but then they're also doing some other adjustments on it. So it, it is not entirely predictable that it will reflect what our actual appeal number would be. We had a follow-up discussion that Sharon and I had last week with Senator Klobuchar's office, which was, that office has been very helpful, and it was probably as a result of their, the senator's letter, both Senator Klobuchar and Congressman Fishbox's letter to the Director of U.S. Census that there was some response. And his, his update was basically, let's keep watching and then let us know if there's anything more to do. So May, we're looking for our number. With that, we'll move then to the next agenda item, and which would be staff reports. Sharon?
Yeah, I'll just be really brief. Thank you for mentioning some of the legislative proposals that are out there. I typically am pretty calm on most of them. I, I did, I think the middle housing legislation is harmful to the City of Marshall. And yeah, we've voiced our opinions here at the city, up to our own representatives and, and others as well. I know that it's somewhat getting broken apart, and maybe it won't make it through in its final form to what we thought it was going to be originally. But essentially, they, to be brief, would be allowing duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, up to eightplexes in any residential area. And in some of our provisions, we would, currently under ordinance is we require a conditional use permit, which I think we had one maybe in the last year where City Council did decide the fate of that request and denied it. Under the legislation, you would not have that opportunity. So yeah, it seems like they're kind of getting down to city council governance versus statewide legislation. So it's harmful. But they got broad support, and I still think there's individual interests for each party that supports it in it. And I, it's just wrong. So wanted to mention on that, I know the last meeting, there was a, Dr. Meister brought up North Memorial. They did conduct a public meeting with the EMSRB Board, which is a regulatory licensing agency for our ambulance license in across the state. And they, on file, there's been 10 objections to their license to go from full-time ALS to part-time. They need to resolve those by April 4th. Otherwise, there'll be a public hearing here in Marshall. So I will ask EMSRB this week, at the end of this week, if they've been successful resolving it. Otherwise, there may be a public process conducted here in the, in the City of Marshall. And then just been doing some prep work for strategic planning for the city as a whole, and then also DEI. We've got kind of two separate processes with two separate facilitators, but hopefully, again, we get good end results with that. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot to report. I did attend the county board meeting last week to discuss drainage in the County District 62 off of Bruce Street, part of the College Drive project. That was a nice discussion, and they did approve our, our outlet, our and MINDOT's outlet for that project. So appreciate their conversation and the help of John Behren over there at the county. Held a pre-construction meeting today for the Whitney Reconstruction Project. Eric Hanson led that and our engineering department. So that was good to talk about the project when it's snowing outside. But I think the plan is still to see some activity starting in mid-April, maybe from the gas company first. But we'll see how that goes. And our project hopefully starts sometime in April yet. And lastly, just echo Councilman Lizinski's comments. Thank you to everyone who moves snow on behalf of the city and, and others. And thanks, everyone, for their patience while that happens. So it's, we have to make it go somewhere, and it usually goes where you don't want it. But we appreciate everyone's patience.
Thank you. Any questions for Jason? If not, City Attorney Pam Whitmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have much for the good of the whole. I will say that I sent Sharon some samples of resolutions that other cities are adopting with respect to that middle, that housing legislation, zoning legislation. So it's something staff can look at and, and bring forward if, if they so choose.
Very good. Thank you. The remaining items on the agenda include Agenda Item Number 24, the minutes from the Planning Commission. Agenda Item Number 25 is the Marshall Capstone Endowment Fund information. That was an information item. EJ, did you want to say anything about that? Or otherwise, it's just information on the status of that fund? This is the fund that was funded when the transfer ownership of, it was established during the transfer ownership of the hospital to Avira. And the building permits are listed, as well as the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there anything further to come forward at this meeting? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim to adjourn discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. The motion passes. We are adjourned.